All right, well, here we are again for our last six-week School Board Candidate Academy, our third of 2022. This will be our last series for this part of the summer, and we will be relaunching our School Board Candidate Academy later on in August. So, without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Laura Zork, our Director of Education Reform at Freedom Works, to go over some last tips for creating your campaign speech and preparing to launch your campaign.
Thanks, Zach. Hope everyone's having a pleasant summer. I know that having kids at home and trying to work from home sometimes can be challenging, but entertaining at the same time, right? So I apologize if there does so happen to be an interruption that takes place in the background. So I'm excited about this last training that we have. It's our, it's our six weeks now. We've taken you through, we walked through what are the roles and responsibilities of a school board member, what are those first steps? The second week, we really dove into marketing yourself as a candidate. What are those first, first steps that you need to take? And what do you need to look at? And just even launching a marketing campaign about yourself, because that's really what this is about. It's about a rapid marketing campaign. I know that you're trying to promote yourself as candidate to get the most votes as possible, but you really have to look at it, you're marketing yourself as an individual to, to appeal to the individuals to, to buy what you're selling. What you're selling is that you are the qualified candidate, and you need them to vote for you to make those long-lasting changes. Then we had some great training from leadership, which dealt with fundraising. Fundraising is probably one of the most difficult parts of any campaign. Nobody likes the fundraising part. But then we talked about blocking and bridging. What I want to really talk to you about now, I know, I know I went over it in the second six weeks, but I want to make it clear, and I want it to really sink in that this is probably one of the most important parts of your campaign, is really determining those top three issues that you're going to be working on as a candidate that you've identified that are important. Today, we're going to look at how are you going to take those top three issues and bring it into your campaign stump speech. Toward the end of, of this presentation, like Zach said, we are going to be practicing with you. So start thinking about that for the individuals that are on here. I'm going to ask you to practice your, your 60-second opener with us, and a part of your 60-second opener will, will walk through what, what that's going to look like. But you really should, if, if you are a candidate, you've already filed, and if you're in the chat right now, if you are already filed as a candidate, can you put in the chat when your election day is? I know we have quite a few elections coming up on June 14th, which this, this presentation might not be fitting for them, but the individuals that actually have it, an election coming up in August and November, this is, you're, you're doing the right thing by being here, because you still have plenty of time to practice. Why are these stump speeches so important? Because we know that the first question that, that's asked of anyone when they file is, why are you running? How are you going to make a difference? And you have only that, maybe that one shot to make that first impression. So it's important that you always make that right first impression. But if your campaign's coming up in August, and if it's coming up in November, you have these public forums that you're going to be participating in, and we want to make sure that you just knock it out of the park whenever you get up there. And you present who you are, you market yourself, and, and you capture their vote based on just being able to sell your ideas to, to the constituents that you're representing. So what I want to do, I want to just jump into this, and this is a repeat from the second week training. But your speeches, your videos, your materials should always be a quick way for you as the candidate to answer the following questions that voters want to know. And the way that you're going to be ahead of your opponent is you're always going to be able to answer those questions without anyone asking. So what we know is that people, when they're looking at candidates, they want to know, okay, who are you? Yes, you might be a part of a local, a local group. You might have some name recognition. But we have to realize that not everyone knows you, and not every, or maybe they, they think that they know you. Maybe they have a perception of you that they've seen you on Facebook, or, or you might be a local business owner. Maybe, you know, you might be in some of the same circles, but do they really know you? And so I just don't leave that to chance. So we have to make sure that when we're marketing you as a candidate, that you're very clear on who are you? Are you a mom? Are you a dad? Are you a business owner? Have, have, are you born and raised in a community? Are, are you a retired educator? Make sure that, that you're very clear on who you are, because that's part of your qualifications. And that is, and people want to know, what makes you qualified? And so when you're thinking about putting your stump speech together, when you're thinking about getting up and talking at these forums, you have to, you have to already know, they're not asking me this question formally, but I'm going to go ahead and answer it, because I know that's what they're looking for. So what makes you qualified? You know, I don't care how many master's degrees you have, PhDs you have. Honestly, that doesn't make you qualified to be, be on the school board. What makes you qualified is what are you going to bring to the table? What's different that's not already being addressed? Are you someone that, like, my background's forensic accounting. So my background, yes, I was, I am a parent of four, but I wanted to bring transparency to, to our, our budget. And so that was something that I was able to bring that was unique to the table. So you need to look at, when you're trying to market yourself, what's unique that can set you apart? And, and how can you match that into your, your platform? People want to know, why are you running for office? One thing that I think I've talked to you about whenever I give this presentation, you never, ever, ever want to answer with, "I was asked to run." Even if that's the case, me as a constituent and others that are looking at who's going to be the most qualified candidate, one thing I do know is that once you say that you were recruited and you were asked to run, you are now trying to overcome a hurdle, because you're, you're seen as a recruited candidate, and, and it's a negative connotation around you. So people don't like recruited candidates. We like candidates that have the passion, that, that see the problems, and they're willing to jump in a race based on their own knowledge. If you're a recruited candidate, you're already trying to, you're, you're fighting in a battle that you don't even want to open up. So if you are a recruited candidate, that is perfectly fine, but we're just not going to publicly say that. So if someone says, "Why are you running?", you need to list because of your qualifications, because of what are the platform issues you've identified? What are the problems? But one thing that, when we talk about our platform speech, and whenever we're out answering questions, yes, they want to know, "Why are you running?" And that's going to be based on the research that you've done on your platform issues. But you need to spend 75% of your time talking about the solutions that you're going to bring. You're going to have to talk in bullet points. What are the problems that you're seeing? That should be bullet point conversations. And then, then 75% of the rest of the time, you're going to talk about solutions, because we're so tired of talking about the problems, right? We're tired of people that, they get in there and they're, say that they're going to do certain things, but then they don't do it. And the reason that they don't do it is when they were elected, they really didn't have any solutions to the problem. So you really need to make sure that whenever you're talking about the issues, that you have a solid understanding of what are those solutions. And if you've identified three, four, or five areas that are your, your issues that you're going to run on, you have our, you have said, "I'm the expert on these issues." I'm that, and I'll, I'll give an example of what that is here in a second. But if it's, you know, your, your goal is to increase graduation rates. If you're, if you're looking at teacher retention, you need to really have those solid, solid solutions that you're, you're going to have if you have those, those issues. And you have to be the expert. Anyone that asks you a question on that topic, you need to know more than the common person. And so it's going to take, you're going to have to make sure that you've done your research once you start talking about those issues. And here is probably one of the another most important question that when individuals are looking at, do, is this the right person? They want to know, "Why should I vote for you?" And that's something that you're going to have to build into your platform speech, and that's, and into your conversations. So why, why is this important? Because not only whenever you have identified what are those platform issues, those talking points, who am I? I, you know, this is, this is an example of how, how you can take all this information and not, not only use it for your, your platform speeches, but you can use it for your video materials, and you can use it for your marketing materials. For example, who am I? You know, I'm a mom, and I use this as an example. You know, why am I experiencing, sorry, let me move this here. Got my picture in the way here. For example, who am I? Why, what experience do I have? And while I'm the mom of four, I was the PTA, I was on the Florida PTA Board of Directors. I was on the Freedom Works Policy Advisory Board back, back when I was running. I was president of the County PTA, and I served under Governor Scott on the, on the Keep Florida Learning Committee. So those were just some things that I brought into play. Whenever I was running, I was running against a retired teacher. So I had a hurdle to overcome, because he was, he could have tried to push that he was more qualified, he had more knowledge and, and all that. But you have to find, what are those, what are those things about you that make you relevant to education? You know, what sets you apart that's different? So I was able to just take my own personal experience and, and bring it to the table, because you, you don't want to be the same, right? You want to set yourself apart. So then you go into, what are those, those platform issues that, that you're going to run on? When I talk about bullet point, bullet pointing, it's important, because people are not going to remember it if, if you, you have a long-drawn-out explanation, right? Their, their eyes are going to glaze over, they're just not going to remember it. But you have to really craft your message so that you can get it down to those bullying bullet points. And for example, here's an example of what I mean by that. Increase graduation rates, improve literacy, trust parents, empower teachers, eliminate the bureaucratic control, and more school choice. So those were the five issues that I was running on. But what are those five issues you're running on? And then, if you look, there, I just have a small explanation of how am I going to make a difference and bring those solutions? And then you'll see here that I have my contact information, I have the date of my election, and I have a website. And that is always important, that you have it on every piece of information that you put out. How can they contact you? And when is your election? Now, yes, this is a palm card, but guess what? This is all that same information that you need to craft a dynamic 60-second opener, two-minute opener. And, and here's the thing. When you are speaking publicly and you're invited to come and speak to these groups, it's typically, it will typically always be a 60-second opener, two-minute opener, or a three-minute opener. And it's, and for your closers, you might get 60 seconds. A lot of times, whenever you're speaking at forums, you might get a closer, you might not. But go ahead and have a 60-second and a two-minute closer, because that, that isn't unheard of. But I have been to numerous Republican meetings, just various meetings, and candidates are in the room, and the, the host of the, the meeting would say, I was at a, I was at a kid's, I save our schools, America, down in, down in West Palm Beach. I was there to speak, and the host of the, the meeting recognized all the candidates that were in the room. The candidates were very caught off surprise, because the host asked all the candidates that were there to come up front. So we, there were five candidates that come up front, and she, and then she took the mic, and she gave it to the candidates and said, and asked the candidates to take a couple of minutes to introduce themselves, and why are they running? And I'm going to tell you, these candidates, they were caught so off-guard that some went really short, their name, and they were just flustered. Some went like five, six minutes, she had to take the mic away. But unfortunately, none of these candidates were prepared for that moment. And I'm going to tell you, as a candidate, that is, it's very typical that when you're out and, and you're trying to get to know the constituents, it's very typical for a host like that to say, hey, introduce yourself, give us a couple of minutes, who you are, why you're running. And that's why it's so important that if you can practice, and you can really hone in your thoughts, and, and really sell yourself and market your, market yourself in the 60-second and these two-minute sound bites, you are going to be so far ahead of your opponent, and you're going to knock it out of the park, and you're going to impress the people in, in the room. And you're going to have people to come to you and say, "I liked what you had to say. How do I get involved in your campaign?" Or they might say, "Look, I, I work full-time. I, I have kids at home during the summer. I really don't have time to volunteer for your campaign, but how do I donate to your campaign?" So that's the situation that you want to get to. But Zach, you and I know, we've been doing this training for quite a while. And when we get to this point, no matter how much we stress how important these 60- and two-minute canned speeches are, most, most are, most of our students that are on here are not prepared. But that's why today, it's, it's fun. It's going to be a fun time to practice with you, a 60-second and a two-minute, two-minute opener with you, because I want to make sure that, that you have time to get a feel of, well, how fast 60 seconds goes, but how much information you can actually pack into two minutes. So we're going to practice this toward the end, because practice, 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 it really does make a difference. Especially if you are someone that, you're not a, you're not someone that likes to publicly speak. The more that you practice, the more natural it's going to be, and the less nervous you're going to be. So, and that's why I'm, I'm trying to get you outside of your comfort zone and kind of make you do this, because you're going to eventually have to do it. And when you do it, you don't want the first time to be in front of an audience. You're nervous, you're stumbling, because we don't, we want to make sure every opportunity that you have to speak in front of people that you are actually earning votes. But we're going to walk through with your stump speech. You're going to have your introduction, you're going to incorporate your personal story. You have your problem statement, what are those issues, right? Graduation rates, teacher morale, whatever it is, that's your problem. Problems, you're going to have your solutions, you're going to ask them for the vote, and then you're going to leave them within action. And that might be, "Contact me on my website." It might be, "Come to one of my events," whatever that is. You always want to try to incorporate some point of action at the end of your speech. But one thing that you also need to practice, and I know we talk about our openers, but you need to get used to preparing a 60-second closer, because no matter where you are when you're doing a, when you're in a forum, even, the things about forums that you need to be prepared for are the unexpected, because someone will invite you to come to a forum, and you and, and the other candidates running for school board, they might tell you, you have a three-minute opener, and you're going to have a, a three-minute closer. Things happen, the forum's running too long, and they might say, "You know what, we only have time for a 60-second closer." And one thing I've seen candidates make a mistake about, including myself, is I've prepared, I have a beautiful three-minute closer, I've prepared everything here, I've practiced it. And then they tell me, "I have a 60-second closer." I am just thrown off-guard now, I don't know what to do. I'm stuttering, I'm stammering, and I'm nervous now, and everybody sees it. I don't want you to be that same person that I was as a, a new candidate. I want you to be prepared for the unexpected. So whenever you do prepare your closers and your openers, prepare talking points, because if you have a very beautiful script, all written out, and if they change the time on you, then you're going to just be totally, you're going to lose your space, spot, you're going to lose your concentration, and they're going to be able to tell you're nervous. So just make sure whenever you do prepare your closers and your openers, that you put them in talking points. You have, you can, you can have it on note cards, you can have it on a piece of paper. But it's important that you do have, have your talking points. But in your closer, you always want to make sure that you thank the individuals that are hosting the event. One mistake that I think that candidates make that don't know any better, the new candidates, is they forget to repeat their name. Because you have to keep in mind, whenever you are at a forum, if there's multiple candidates that are speaking, people are going to forget, now, who is that again? Who is, and by the time you get to your closer, they're going to have an idea on their mind, what candidate that stuck out to them. They're going to know your face, but they're going to have forgotten your name. So whenever you do in your closer, you want to thank the, the moderator and the, the individuals that's hosting it. You want to make sure that you repeat your name. Who are you? Remind them, again, why they need to vote for you? Why do you have the solutions? You need to remind them when the election is. And in your closer, you never want to miss the opportunity on how they can contact you and join your campaign. So the, those are some tips for your closers. And we're not going to practice the closers today, but you do need to be prepared and, and look at that format. One thing that I think it's very important for you to understand is, with Freedom Works, we have a lot of resources, and we have a lot of great groups out there that come to us, and they, they, they offer us their resources. With the School Board Candidate Training, this is really a new national push that we've had over the last, last year, is to try to get more individuals like yourself elected to school boards, because we know that you're on the front lines, and that the school board elections, don't let anyone tell you this. If they're telling you that it's the governor's race, it's the House race, it's the Senate race, they're clueless. The most important elections right now in our lifetime are the school board elections, because we know it's these school board members that are making these radical decisions for our kids. So these school board elections, if you're a school board candidate and you've already filed, I want you to know that you are in the most important race right now in our country, and we have all these great resources that are coming to us, that want us to share these with you. And one of them is the 1776 Project PAC. They are currently looking at candidates to endorse. I, I do know this is a great group. They're very concerned about the anti-American, the biased curriculum being taught within our classrooms. They, they have money behind the endorsement. So it's, it's a very important resource for you to take a look at. It's very simple. You go to the 1776projectpact.com under endorsements, and it's, it's a very short form that you fill out, and then they'll give you a call, and they'll set up a time to talk to you about what are your platform issues? How are you going to make that difference? What we just talked about, who are you? All those basic things that I just talked with you about. They're going to ask you those questions. And then it's important that you let them know that you were recommended to fill this out by, by BASS, because you were, you're a candidate through the Candidate Academy. And, and I think this is a dynamic resource for you. But there is another one that was brought to us that not very many candidates know about, and that's okay, because we only want our candidates to really understand what this next resource is, because what we do know is that 80% of the voters go online to research their candidates before they cast a vote for them. That's 80%. So let's say you only have a Facebook page, and you don't have a website, or you have a website, but it's not really coming to the top whenever somebody puts in, you know, looking up for your local elections. Ballipedia has a new resource for school board candidates, and it's so important. You keep this among us, right? Among our friends and like-minded candidates. But it's important that you also take advantage of this resource. And what we're going to do is, a couple of weeks ago, we had the Ballipedia representative on one of these trainings with us. We recorded it, he's on one of these trainings with us, we recorded it, he's not able to be on with us today, but we have the ten minute recording, we're going to go ahead and play that for you right now, because it's important for you to understand what Ballipedia has for you, so that you can, you know, just have one additional resource at your fingertips. Then when we come back, we're going to actually start practicing your sixty second openers. And so if you want to use those times to maybe put together your thoughts, this, this would be a great time. So Zach, do you have the the recording?
Yes, I do, and just for everyone watching, note that I might jump around a bit while we're watching this. There are some technical issues with this recording, which is why we are aiming to get it rerecorded in the future. So let me share my screen. Let's take this full screen, can you see it?
Yes.
Come on.
Don't we love technology?
Yep, it likes to kick you off if you're not active for, you know, every five minutes or something. Alright, so let's jump ahead back to one.
Can you all see a Ballipedia slide? Yep, you can, okay, great. Well, awesome, alright. Well, Zachary said, my name is Corey Ucalito, I'm a managing editor with Ballipedia. And I'm here today to talk a little bit about Ballipedia in general, but also about two specific resources, I guess you could say, we have for school board candidates and office holders. A little bit about the organization as a whole, we are the digital encyclopedia of American politics and elections. Our goal is to inform people about politics by providing accurate and objective information about politics at all levels of government. We are firmly committed to neutrality in our content as well, so that's going to be true with our candidate surveys and all of the newsletters that we'll talk about in a moment. Now you see me, oh, let's see. Perfect, alright. Okay, so Ballipedia is home to over three hundred and thirty-four thousand pages on all aspects of American politics, federal, state, and local, and we are still growing, particularly in the local area, where there is the most opportunity for growth. You'll see that here, we cover elected and appointed officials, candidates and elections, including primaries for President of the United States, House and Senate, Supreme Court, and all federal judges, governor and all statewide executive officials, state Supreme Courts, all seven thousand three hundred and eighty-three state legislative seats, school board elections in the country's two hundred largest districts, municipal elections in the country's one hundred largest cities and all state capitals, all statewide ballot measures, and all notable local ballot measures. That point about school board elections is important, right now we cover elections in the country's two hundred, two hundred largest school districts, but we're making our candidate survey, which I'll talk about in a moment, available to school board candidates and office holders at all, any size school district in the entire country. So we're hoping to expand to cover school board elections, and we're working towards that now, any size across the entire country. We also intensively cover process laws relating to politics, including ballot access laws, laws on recount procedures, recall procedures, laws governing judicial selection, notable election reform proposals, how state constitutions are amended, and redistricting, which we've been covering in in great depth for the past several months. The next few slides will highlight, I think, the value that Ballipedia can provide in terms of getting information in front of constituents and potential voters. We've received many millions of lifetime page views, topping out at two hundred and eighty-eight million in the 2020 election. You can see spikes in every even year when more elections are taking place. So we're certainly expecting to top that in 2022. We continue to grow the number of articles on Ballipedia, as I said before, we have three hundred and thirty-four thousand now. We added fifteen thousand in 2021, almost twenty thousand in 2020. So we continue to grow as we cover more elections and more candidates and more policy areas. Search result placement is very important for Ballipedia, and it's very important for, again, getting information out about yourself and about elections in front of readers. On average, Ballipedia appears in the top five search results for relevant keywords. And we appear in the top three results for fifty-four percent of the keywords that we track. You can also find many answers to your questions from Ballipedia above the search results in the the Google info boxes, I think they call it. Twenty-three percent of voters were Ballipedia readers in the six weeks before Election Day in 2020. That's up from twenty-two percent in 2018, fifteen percent in 2016, and nine percent in 2020. Our Alexa ranking speaks to our traffic, so Alexa ranking tracks the most popular websites in the country at any given time. Our lowest score ever, which is the best, low is good, on SiteGolf was seventy-seven in November of 2020, which means there are only seventy-six websites in the United States out of millions that got more traffic than Ballipedia around the 2020 election. That's more than Bloomberg, BuzzFeed, TikTok, CBS, Drudge Report, the LA Times, the New York Post, Politico, Real Clear Politics, and US News and World Reports were a really good resource to, again, make you, make yourself be known and and make yourself accessible to to voters. Our sample ballot lookup tool has been used over twenty-one million times. This is a tool where voters can plug in their address, and we will tell them what's on their ballot on a given day. A universal sample ballot tool is a dream of many civic tech companies, and we think that we're positioned to succeed building that, given our existing traffic and the support we have for everything on the ballot. So we currently cover that full scope that I laid out before in the sample ballot. We're working to expand, so even if you're outside that scope, we'll be expanding in the future to make sure that you show up in that sample ballot tool, as well as your survey responses and things like that. We receive a large number of media mentions, topping out about seventeen thousand in 2020. It's evolved from having a descriptor attached, being, you know, Ballipedia, which is a website that tracks, tracks elections. Now there's really no explanation needed, citations are written simply as according to Ballipedia. And so very often, information about candidates is cited as a, as coming from Ballipedia, when they're written about in local papers and things. We have close to one million.
Alright, so that was a bit about Ballipedia's statistics and their growth insofar as how they're able to connect with voters and people researching elections across the country. And now I'm just going to skip forward to where Corey begins to talk about the Candidate Connection Survey, which is the resource that, oh, we are real excited for you to hear more about.
For school board candidates and elected officials are our Candidate Connection Survey and our Hall Pass newsletter. I'll start with the Candidate Connection Survey. This brought up two observations, the first is that everyone deserves meaningful, reliable, and trustworthy information about their candidates. And the second is that good information, especially at the local level, as I'm sure some of the folks on this call know, it's hard to find. So to that end, we ask all federal, state, and local candidates to complete a survey and share what motivates them on a political, on political and personal levels. The survey allows voters really to access their candidates and get information that they need to feel confident that they are voting for and picking the best candidate for the role. So when you take our survey, there are a number of questions broken up into into some categories. He asks you basic things like, what is the name of the school district, who's board you're seeking election? Who are you? Tell us about yourself in two hundred words or less. What are the main points you want voters to remember about you and your candidacy? We ask about political philosophy, some examples specifically from our school board survey. Questions are generally tailored for specific office types, so these are relevant, obviously, for school board candidates. What qualities do school board governance in your state or specific school district have that makes it important? What kinds of skills or expertise do you believe would be the most helpful for school board members in this district to possess? And what do you believe are the core responsibilities for someone elected to this office? We also ask questions that let voters understand your qualities and character. One question is, what is something that has been a struggle in your life? What is your favorite book and why? Or just tell us your favorite joke. So when you complete the survey, it will show up on a profile with generally your name, where you are running, and the year you're running. This is an example of a profile of someone who completed a candidate survey in 2021. If we're covering your election fully, there'll be a bit more information, but no matter what, any candidates, any school board candidate in the country can complete this survey, and will be posted online. So you can see there's an article for Bob Williams, he was running in the Ashboro City School Board Election in November 2021. And there's a large box on this article where you can see his answers to who are you, tell us about yourself in two hundred words or less, list three key messages of your campaign, what areas of public policy are you personally passionate about, what was your first job? So when this article is published, and these survey responses are published, as I mentioned before about our Google search results, there's a good chance that these will be highly ranking pages in Google when someone goes and searches for your name and the town or school district that you're running in. So it's a really great way to get information about yourself before potential voters and constituents. You can take that survey, this link is unique to school board members at tinyurl.com/ballipdiasurvey. And I can make sure everyone here has the link to to send it out via email or something later on, and I'll put it up back on, back on the screen when I finish up here. But it's tinyurl.com/ballipdiasurvey. The final offering briefly is our Hall Pass newsletter, this is a free weekly newsletter that we launched.
Alright, and I will make sure that everyone on the call and all of our registrants have access to that tiny URL link in the follow-up email after the end of this call and the end of our third Candidate Academy. But Laura can speak more about this if she wants, but Ballipedia, I think, is absolutely going to be a great resource for all of you, not only because it puts you in front of so many voters, which I think is important, but the barrier to entry is so low. Filling out a Candidate Connection Survey automatically gets you a page on Ballipedia. And I think that is a huge resource, and it is instrumental for smaller campaigns. And I'm so happy that Ballipedia is putting time and resources into growing their local campaign coverage.
So yeah, I appreciate that, Zach, and you're right, I was just sitting here while he was going through that, Corey was going through that, and I Googled Bob Williams, because I wanted to see, I wanted to just learn a little bit more about him. And so this is interesting, and this is why I think you need to, you know, what do you have to lose? Just go on there, just fill out the information, and and this is editable. So when Corey was on there, one of the questions was, can I edit it? Yes, he said you can edit it, so even if you go on and and you put in something short now, you can go back and and update it. But what I found interesting was the fact that this Bob Williams is actually an attorney in North Carolina. So it has his office number that pops up, but the first link that pops up about Bob Williams is his, and you can't see it there, but anyways, it's his Ballipedia survey. And then as you go on down, you can see about his partnership and and everything else, but it just shows you that, that the, the power that the Ballipedia has in being able to populate to the top of the list is there. So why wouldn't we want to fill that out, right? Because if we do know that eighty percent of the voters are going to Google you or Google the race, you want to be the first, first to come up in the the list. But anyways, we're hoping that you'll take advantage of that, and if you do, let us know so that we can, we can go back and take a look at at what you filled out, send us an email, so forth. But what I want to do right now, Zach, is I want to take like this last fifteen minutes, I want to work with the the candidates on here, and I want you to be able to practice your sixty second opener with us so that you can really hone those skills.